Okay, good evening and welcome to this Tuesday, September 21st, 2021, meeting of the Raymore Planning and Zoning Commission. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and we'll go into our roll call. Commissioner Bowie. Commissioner Ingart.
President.
Commissioner Faulkner.
President.
Vice Chair Pfizer.
Present.
Commissioner Manser.
Present.
Secretary Peterman.
Present.
Commissioner Kea. Mayor Turnbull.
Present.
Chairman Wiggins is present. We will, do not have any personal appearances tonight, so that will move us into our consent agenda. We have two items, the approval of minutes from September 7th, 2021 meeting. And I will note, everybody should have received a copy of some edits to the minutes. So those would be part of the minutes from our last meeting, as well as item B, case 21027, Alexander Creek, Third Platte. I would entertain a motion to dispose of that item, please.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Faulkner.
I move that we accept consent agenda, including approval of minutes from September 7th, as edited, and case 21027, Alexander Creek, Third Platte.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Faulkner, seconded by Commissioner, or Secretary Peterman, to accept the consent agenda. Item A, the approved minutes from September 7th with edits as presented. And item B, case 21027, Alexander Creek, Third Platte. Any discussion on the topic? Seeing none, and I will note for the record, Commissioner Bowie is here. All those in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? And abstentions? Very good. That's seven, zero, and one. All right. So you have my notes there. We have no unfinished business tonight, so we will move directly into new business, the annual review of the Unified Development Code, at which I would assume would come to staff for that item, please.
Thank you, sir. A little late this year with our annual review. Historically, we've done the review in June of 2021, but pushed it back a few months, so we are submitting it to you this evening. Couple of brief comments. The, all the amendments that have been done to the U I, U D C are included in here, what we have a, what we as the commission and city have amended over the past year since we last did the report. Our amendment 32 was where we established the requirements for the small wireless facilities. This is going to be for the 5G networks that are being installed across the country. And the ability for them to use existing city power, city utility poles and the like. And then we did the 33rd amendment in November, and this was the, basically taking the items that were talked about in the 2020 annual review. Dealt with such thing as architectural design for multifamily developments. We established the standards for our drive-through menu boards, and a few other minor changes were done under amendment 33. This evening, staff brings only a couple of suggested amendments for the commission to consider. I'll, I'll go through those and then if you have any questions, of course, we're prepared to answer. What we'd like to suggest this year, one of the items, I believe the first item is in our flood protection, chapter 460. And it's simply trying to clarify what has been our practice for many, many, many years. Is the fact that we don't allow any platted lots in our residential subdivisions to encroach in either the FEMA designated floodplain area or within the 100-year flood elevation area for those properties, not identified as special flood hazard area. We have the language already within our non-residential construction areas. I don't know if it was oversight on my part when the U D C was done, or if I simply couldn't find it within the code. But it certainly appears that it should be within this section of our code, just for clarity. So we're suggesting the additional language be added on residential construction. So that was the recommended change number one. The, the second change we would like the commission to consider, again, another just clarification dealing with our monument signs in our different zoning districts of the city. We've always held that we allow monument signs, a business on a quarter lot, to have one sign per street frontage. That was always the intent of the code. If you have a development or a outlot that happens to be a quarter lot with two street frontages, or three, if that's the case. We do have always allowed one monument sign per street frontage. And I just wanted that clarification to be added within our code and actually all the zoning districts. I believe it just listed that one monument was, sign was allowed, and we've added the language per street frontage. That was always our understanding of the intent of the sign code and felt that that should be clear within the language of the code. So for this year, we only have those two amendments, kind of a light year. Typically, we have a lot more suggestions for changes or additions, but those are the only two that we're bringing forward at this time. So available for any questions on those. We do have a couple of topics for discussion, though, after discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Katterett. Anybody have any questions, inquiries for staff? Any discussion for those couple of items? Seem fairly easy, but obviously, any input is welcome. Seeing none, I think that probably would be fine, since this, we, this is not really an, I guess, question would be, since the other things are discussion topics. Excuse me, do we need to vote on, make a motion to approve the recommended changes? Or would that be after any discussion from, or do they need to be separated, or is this?
At the end of our discussion here, we have two topics that may lead to an amendment. So after we finish up all the discussion items, what, what we would be looking for is a direction consensus from the commission to direct staff to prepare what would be the 34th amendment to the U D C. It would include those first two items we just discussed. And then depending upon discussion items A and B, and anything the commission may have, you could direct us to do that as well, so.
Very good.
Under the discussion items, there were two. The first item, I know Commissioner Peterman had raised this topic a couple of meetings ago. I didn't know if there was, there really wasn't any discussion. It was at the end of the meeting. I simply wanted to put it out there, if there was any direction from the commission regarding the planning commission holding work sessions. I know Park Board, of course, holds work sessions, City Council, of course, does. Planning commission, in my history, has not held work sessions. Doesn't mean it can't be done. The one comment that I would make, and, and Mr. Zer's place this evening, I think he would say the same thing. The process of the planning commission is a little bit different than specifically Park Board. Because some of your cases are actual public hearings, where we require notification to the owners, and it's almost steps outside the process. If we were to start holding work sessions on a matter such as, let's take Madison Valley. If we held a work session, the public can attend, but not speak at necessarily, and we're, we're hearing a presentation from the developer, and staff may or may not have comments, but it's really outside the realm of what statute intended to have happen for planning commission public hearings. So if it's a non-public hearing item, maybe a site plan or something, maybe the work session makes a, you know, it would be more applicable. But I, I think there's a little bit of caution that should be held for those items that should go through a public hearing process. That's really the only comment the staff has. We're certainly not against work sessions. We, we hold semi-work sessions occasionally for training, typically as a topic that we go through and do. We certainly want to keep doing those, you know, whether it's staff-led, city attorney-led, or some other means. That's really all that I intended to say, and I think speaking for a little bit from Mr. Zer, I know he had the same comments on the public hearing items.
And obviously, I welcome any other comment. You know, one of the things, and these, I guess my question would be is either A, when we have nothing on the agenda, you know, if we have enough advance notice to make plans to attend those meetings. I would love to hear from Mr. Gress a little bit more about what's going on as far as, you know, perspective things, or what he's got going on. I remember, was it Matt Tap? Was that his predecessor?
Yes.
You know, I, I liked seeing or hearing from him, and it could be much more of an informal situation as opposed to everybody the dais. It could be more sitting around, but I, I, you know, I know council and obviously the mayor gets a lot of that information, but we don't necessarily. And so obviously, from watching some council meetings and stuff, we do get some secondhand info. But it would be nice for some things to, you know, things that are in planning to come to, some sort of information to get to the Planning and Zoning Commission before it's happening, before it's, you know. And I know sometimes legally, you guys can't say a whole heck of a lot, but it's like, you know, hey, we've heard from XYZ developer. They have interest on doing a third building out south, and we're, you know, entertaining. It'd just be nice to know some of those things that are potentially coming down the road. But I also know there's probably a gray area there between what you can and cannot say. But that would just be my opinion of those kind of things I definitely would love to hear about, and it'd be a great opportunity to do, you know, any commission trainings or anything. But maybe it would, instead of it being an additional time, it might be when we know, hey, three meetings from now, we have nothing on the agenda. Let's see if we can line up a more of a work session type environment. But I would defer to Secretary Peterman, since it was his, and I know Commissioner Bowie, you had a comment to make, but.
I'll comment on, I called it a work session, and after listening, it's really not a work session that I'm looking for. I'm looking for training, you know, that we would have communication on different things when we haven't been through it. You know, the newbies, that's, that's really, I understand the difference between that and the work session. And, you know, just, I guess I use the word because I usually attend the ones for the city councils, so anyway, thank you.
Commissioner Bowie, I saw you, you had your hand up earlier.
Yeah, I just wanted to piggyback on Commissioner Peterman and Chairman Wiggins, that those are, those, both of those are good ideas for work session. Well, work sessions for a little more detail on some things, as Commissioner, as Chairman said. And also, as Commissioner Peterman said, just training, educational. So I just want to kind of, second or third, whatever they, they mentioned, I think those are both great ideas.
Great suggestions. And certainly with the Economic Development Director, I agree. And sometimes, I think it would be good for the commission to know, kind of a higher elevation view of what he's working on. Yeah, you're right. We can't get into maybe some specific details of who he's contacted, or who he's been contacted by, but we can give some higher level discussions on, to inform the council what he is working on. There's a lot of things going on that I think it would be helpful to hear from, you know, maybe once or twice a year from him.
Yeah, even things, you know, if he's got, you know, we see his, I think he presented it to the council at a work session, and then I emailed him separately, and he sent me, you know, kind of his map of some of his areas and stuff that he's working on, and what the focus is for a development. You know, those kind of things don't necessarily get disseminated down to us. And so somebody might come in, you know, for instance, a couple of weeks ago, we had the developer that's wanting near Dean and Lucy Webb to, to, that wanted to change the zoning of that. You know, and that, kind of that map of, well, we've actually, for a really long time, thought of this area as being, you know, commercial, and then high-density residential, and then possibly, you know, some sort of two-family or whatever. I'd never heard that. So those kind of information pieces would probably be nice. In addition, the thought that I had, and again, whether that's a training type thing, but, you know, sometimes we sit here and we have made motions in the negative for something, and I know that's kind of a faux pas. But again, nobody's ever told us, hey, if, instead of knocking something down, if you're not in favor of it, of it, if we don't vote at all, if we don't make a motion, period, then it goes forward essentially the same way, without a recommendation, as opposed to a recommendation of no. And obviously, some things maybe carry more weight that would need to be a no, but things like that, you know, we don't discuss that of a, somebody's like, well, I guess I'll just vote it down, you know, I'll make a motion in the negative. If we just sit on your hands, then we don't do anything. We make no motion. You know, things like that, that we don't discuss, because honestly, we come in here, we do whatever on the agenda, and we leave. And so we don't, some of those more training type aspects or whatever might be beneficial as well. Any other comments? Yes, Commissioner Faulkner.
First, I agree with everything that Chairman Wiggins said at the beginning, and also Secretary Peterman and Commissioner Bowie's comments. The other thing I would add is that we have an attendance requirement as members of the commission. And, you know, this is probably a detail that we don't need to get into yet, but I hope that we approached work sessions with some caution so that, because, you know, typically, it sounds like those probably would be additional meetings. Whereas, you know, we can use a meeting that might otherwise be canceled. You know, historically, we've used those for, for training or, or something that was, that was probably more general in nature. But I, I do have a bit of a concern, if we add work sessions, what's that going to do as far as attendance? So that's all.
I think since it would be more training-oriented, or here's what's happening within departments other than, you know, Mr. Katterett's department, that might, you know, we typically have at least one a quarter that are, that are canceled. You know, so if we, if we knew in advance, obviously, you know, two weeks' notice is probably not enough for Mr. Gress or Mr. Zer to put together something. But, you know, if we know, hey, six weeks from now, we, we don't have anything on the agenda, let's explore that as an option. So it'd be much more informal as opposed to scheduled, potentially. And obviously, this was Mr. Peterman's topic, Secretary Peterman's topics, I don't want to put words in his mouth at all, but that, I think that would be an ideal situation. That way, we're not all of a sudden saying, oh, yeah, hey, now, you know, whatever, every third Wednesday, and everybody's like, can't make it.
I would kind of foresee that possibly some of the, the training could be slid in with a, a meeting that we got two things on the, on the agenda, and, and we could bring in David, or we could bring in Mr. Presser, whatever, and, and do part of the training right along with our normal meeting.
Agreed. Any other discussion or opinions, thoughts, comments? Does that give you any sort of charge, I guess, would, would be the best of, you know, if we have a thin agenda, or if we are not going to have one, maybe we plan to utilize some of those as occasional quote-unquote work sessions. That's more of a, probably not the right terminology, but incorporate more training or updating us on city matters.
Great suggestions, yeah.
On evenings that we have a thin agenda.
We'll move forward with that direction. That's great.
Is that okay with everybody? Obviously, we'll have motions later, but, and then you have a second topic, sir.
A second topic, just to talk with, with the commission. We haven't really brought this topic up. It's dealing with our minor plats, our subdivisions of property. Tonight, we had, what's, Alexander Creek is a major subdivision, because we have new public streets, new public infrastructure. We're not talking of changing the process for those types of subdivisions. We have occasionally have a replat of property that it, sometimes it creates an additional lot, sometimes it does not. But it would be on existing streets, so there's no new infrastructure. Somebody's taking, let's say, they have a three-acre parcel that's on Dar Want on an existing street, and they want to split it to create two lots that meet all of our requirements, that's, we're not adding any street infrastructure or anything of that nature. They're simply wanting to divide their property. Or example recently with Brookside subdivision, where they had the tracks that had to become lots. Again, it was predetermined there were going to be lots. There were just some requirements that had to be met, but they had to go through the entire process. So it took 60 days to go from planning commission, city council, two readings of ordinance. What we would like to pursue as staff is looking at changing the process for minor plats. Again, if there's not public improvements or any public infrastructure changes occurring, that'd be done administratively. That the drawings still come into the city, we still have, we staff still have to review it. Okay, if we take it one big lot, making two, do both meet all of our requirements for that zoning designation? And if they do, and we're not making any new street connections or anything of that nature, that'd be done administratively. As, you know, Mr. Zer's talked about many times, when we get to final plat stage, it's, it's, it's pretty tight on what discretion the commission has. You really don't. If it meets all of our requirements, you check all the boxes, and it's code compliant, we have to approve it. So it's really, as we look at the minor plats, it's even a simpler step than that. We're not accepting any new streets for, you know, long-term responsibility, et cetera. We're just allowing a property owner to do what the code allows them to do. So we would like to pursue looking at code language that would allow those simple minor plats to be administratively approved, and they still have to be recorded and documented. It just simplifies the process for the landowner. So we would do a little research and look, and hope to include that with our U D C amendment.
Any questions, comments?
Quick question, sir. How often does that occur?
I would even say once a month. I'd say, you know, probably for a year, you know, maybe eight, seven or eight times a year. So it's not very often.
Okay, thanks.
Would that also be, it's a couple, probably almost a year ago, possibly, where Creekmore fed into, I think it would, wouldn't have been Madison, so just south of, or south and west of Hawkeridge Park, where Creekmore, the neighborhood feeds in, there was like Hampton, yeah, where there was maybe like, there was a little, a couple little chunks. We did a whole session on, okay, well, this 14 square feet is, you know, the right-of-way or whatever has been bequeathed to the Smith family or whatever. It's like, is that an example of something like this, too, or, or does that require a, because there were like three pieces, and they were just weird little strips that.
That's a, that is an example.
Yeah, that, I mean, personally, that was not necessary of our time.
That's, that's, that's how we look at it. Currently, staff has, for a lot line adjustments, where maybe a property owner, you know, inadvertently put an improvement on a neighboring property. A fence, you know, went over by a foot on a property line. Staff has the ability to do an administrative adjustment, a plat, to move a property line, as long as it doesn't encroach in a setback area. And we do that administratively, and it gets recorded. It's really taking that to a, to the next level, if you would, but still pretty benign type request. The example you gave is, is spot on.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
Mr. Chair.
Sir, please.
Well, on that, I think it makes very good sense for staff to proceed, and commission can take a look at it after it's filled out a little bit more and make sure that we're still in agreement.
Yeah, I agree, because, because you would come back to us with any final termination or term, mon, termination, terms, and, 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 yeah. You'd come back with us with language and where it would apply and, or how it would be implemented, correct?
We'd like to, yes, we'd like to include it in the 34th amendment, and then you'll be able to see the exact language, what limits we have as a staff in reviewing that.
Perfect, awesome. Yeah, so is there any other discussion for either of these two items from staff or commission? If not, I think we probably would all be, obviously, we can determine by a motion, that we probably would all be in agreement with these. But if somebody would like to make a motion regarding the, the two instances of changes mentioned.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion, we carry over amendment number 34 for the purpose of staff including the recommendation that was brought to us this evening, so that it's all included in U D C amendment number 34, rather than voting on 34 now and 34 and a half later.
Very good.
I'll second.
All right, so I have a motion by the mayor, seconded by Secretary Peterman, to carry over the topic of amendment 34, so that staff can prepare and provide us with recommended language for amendment 34.
Yep.
Very good. Any discussion on the topic? All those in favor? Seeing all hands, motion passed, eight, nothing. So that concludes our new business for the evening. We would go into city council report. Normally, Mr. Zer would provide that, but does staff or Mayor Turnbull have anything to provide on that this evening?
I'll, I'll start, if that's okay, give a, and then Mayor chime in if there's anything that I overlook. At the September 13th council meeting, there were, there were several items of interest to the commission. On the Watermark Apartment Community Project, council did approve on second reading the chapter 100, the financial incentive request that was regarding the Watermark Apartments. In their new business, they did approve on first reading the proposed rezoning for the Ridgeview Estates development that the planning commission had recommended. That was the P U D zoning. And then regarding the Parkside subdivision, that, that the commission recommended approval on several months ago, and council approved. Parkside was the 320-lot, single-family subdivision, south of Creekmore. So 163rd Street was a northern boundary, Hawkeridge Park was a southern boundary. And Joe Duffy was a developer of record in Parkside LLC. Mr. Duffy had a partner in that LLC by the name of Dan Carr. Mr. Duffy has stepped aside from that LLC development. Mr. Carr formed a new LLC on his own to become the owner, and has purchased the property. So he owns all the acreage that Mr. Ashbaugh had. And he is moving forward with the development the way it was approved by the city. But we had a memorandum of understanding on the development, so under Parkset LLC, since that had no longer exists, council agreed to transfer, create a new M O U with the LLC that Mr. Carr created. And then we had a reimbursement agreement for the design work for, to advance the design work for Sunset Lane and 163rd Street through that development, because that was being paid for by the general obligation bonds. The city is designing the remainder of Sunset Lane, but our schedule wasn't behind what they wanted to move forward with. So council has agreed to do a new reimbursement agreement with Mr. Carr in his LLC. They're using the same engineer, so they've got that continuity. And the first set of plans for Sunset Lane, as it goes through Parkside subdivision, have been submitted. So they are ahead of our schedule. Mr. Carr wants to continue that. His plan would be to build that section of the roadway through his subdivision. We would do a reimbursement agreement for that construction. Again, it gets the road there ahead of what we would build the roadway. We've done that process for Sunset Lane extension on the south. We did that for Foxridge over by the Meadowwood subdivision. So it's a model that works very well, and so council did agree to make those changes to the M O U and the reimbursement agreement. And those were the items on the council agenda.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, do you have anything to add?
Yep, he got it all covered. Nothing to add.
Well, I will continue with you all, or staff report.
All right, couple items of staff report. A few of you were introduced this morning, this evening before the meeting, but we do have our new city planner with us this evening. And just go ahead, let you introduce yourself, and maybe just tell them a little about your background.
Dylan Eppert, second day. Came to you all from the city of Peculiar, where I was a city planner. And before that, I worked at the city Lee Summit for seven years, doing just about everything in development services, like UK and permanent, permanent issuances, building plan review, code enforcement, and went, went back to school and got my urban planners degree, and so here I am.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Be doing some shadowing, of course, for a while, and eventually, this will be his meeting, and.
Throw you to the wolves.
I'm sure it'll be a smooth transition. All right, just the other item under staff report, look at the upcoming agenda. We will have a meeting on October fifth. Recall, the last meeting we had, we deferred action on the capital improvement program. So we will have the public hearing on the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-six CIP. And then we will have the site plan for the Hawkeridge West Park development. So this is the, where the soccer, the practice soccer fields are at. We have some improvements we're doing there, some road connections with the existing parking lot off of Johnston, restroom facility, et cetera. So we'll have a site plan presented to you on the, on the west improvements. And then as the plans become more developed on the east end of Hawkeridge Park, the amphitheater improvements that are being done over there, we'll bring that as a separate site plan. That's currently what we have scheduled. I don't believe we have anything yet for October nineteenth, but I, I think we will have some applications on that, at least one application on that agenda. That's currently what we have coming before you.
Thank you, sir. Moving into public comments, not seeing any public, but giving an opportunity in case somebody would like to come forward. Seeing none, we will jump into our commission member comments. And tonight I will start on my left with Vice Chair Pfizer.
Well, thanks to staff for all that you do and keeping, keeping us informed. Welcome to our, our group here. We're, we're pretty nice, I think you'll like us. And I was happy to see the parade come back this year and I gotta say, my favorite part was the mayor's wife. We, we enjoyed that a great deal. They understand what I'm talking about, but it was, it was pretty cool. Thank you.
Commissioner Faulkner.
Welcome Dylan and thank you to staff.
Commissioner Inger.
I would second what Commissioner Faulkner just said. Welcome aboard.
Secretary Peterman.
I don't have anything.
I'm going to continue down that line. Commissioner Mancer.
Thank you to staff, welcome Dylan. We were walking the halls at the same time, I guess, but welcome and should be a good addition.
Commissioner Bowie.
Welcome as well. Thank you very much for your information. I appreciate it and that's all I got.
Thanks. Mayor Turnbull.
Thank you, Dylan, welcome and good luck in your new endeavor here. What Commissioner Pfizer was talking about was, my wife was ill last year during the royal season when they wouldn't let fans in, they had cardboard cutouts of the photos. So I borrowed hers, which we were able to recover and put it in the seat next to me. So I had, I had Flat Vicky with me through the, through the parade. It wouldn't have been the same without her. It really still wasn't the same without her, but at least people got a kick out of that. I'm glad they enjoyed it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Echo everything else. Thank you, staff. Dylan, welcome. Afford to having you at our meetings. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Mayor Turnbull, seconded by Commissioner Mancer. All in favor? Seeing eight hands, we are adjourned, eight, nothing.